Welcome everyone. We will now go to report a closed session. In closed session, a motion was made by Bill Pollak and seconded by Dr. Lala's that the board approved the classified management reclassification of Leroy Welch to Director One Business Services effective seven one twenty-three with a five oh vote. In closed session, a motion was made by Stacy Nicola, seconded by Mary Ibarra, that the board approved the certificated management reclassification of Casey Mar- Margie? Marty? Marty. To elementary assistant principal at Eisenhower Elementary effective to be determined, five oh. Glenn?
Thank you, Mrs. Ibarra. It's always with great pleasure that we get to introduce new administrative appointments. Leroy is here, I believe, tonight. There's Mr. Leroy Welch. Leroy has worn many hats for us here in the district and we're really excited about his enthusiasm to lead Transportation Forces as a Director in Business.
It's true. I've been asked to do quite a few things for the district and I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity for the new challenge. I have a great team over in the Transportation Department and I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you.
And Casey Marty, who's been a teacher for us at a few places in the district. Most recently, she's a fourth grade teacher at Susan B. Anthony, but we're thrilled about her coming in to help us on the administrative side. She is going to bring her skill set and be a great addition to Eisenhower Elementary as the AP.
I just want to thank you again for this opportunity. I'm really excited to get to serve my community in a new role. And tonight, I brought my entire family with me.
That's right.
I have my daughter Ella, my son Cade, my husband, my parents, my sister and my brother and my nephew. So, everybody's here to support me. We all grew up in Corona Norco. We all went to Norco High, Highland Elementary, Norco Intermediate, Norco High. My kids go to school in our school district. So, this is really a family affair and again, I'm just really grateful for this opportunity. So, thank you.
I'd be remiss if we didn't thank Cade here for sharing his birthday with his mom tonight on her appointment. How old? How old are you?
Okay, in closed session, the board voted to approve their resignation agreement and general release of classified employee number zero two eight zero three seven. And it was a five oh. In closed session, the board voted to dismiss classified employee number zero two six two one three. That was a five oh. In closed session, the board voted to approve a ten-day suspension for classified employee number zero zero eight nine four two. And that was a five zero. Now, we will go on to adoption of minutes. February seventh, regular board meeting. I need a motion in a second to accept the minutes. Daniel. Okay. Good. Okay, let's vote. There goes half the room. Okay. Now, the meeting of February twenty-first, special board meeting. I need a motion in a second to adopt the minutes. No Daniel. Let's vote. Okay. Special recognition, Dr. Reggie Tonkins.
Thank you, Mrs. Ibarra. I'd like to call up Mr. Steve Ellis along with Officer Placentia. We always knew that we have great officers and great partnership with our PD partners between the Corona PD and also Sheriff's Department. But now, we have an Officer of the Year working with our students. And we're really excited about that. So, we're going to allow Ms. Ellis to say some nice words.
Thank you, Dr. Tonkins. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. B, Executive Cabinet. It's just a great honor to recognize Officer Placentia tonight. He's an SRO assigned to Corona High School and he was named Officer of the Year by his peers, by the Corona Police Officers Association. So, that is a tremendous recognition by your own peers. And we're very lucky. He's a graduate of San Diego High School. He grew up in our schools as well. And so, he now has the opportunity to give it back to our kids. And he just is a wonderful asset to school, very engaging, and the staff there just loves him. So, it's with our privilege and great honor that we recognize you, Alex. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. No, honestly, it feels good to be recognized by not only my department, but now being recognized by the school district. So, again, thank you. Appreciate it.
We'd like to get Captain Blue filled up here. He's being a little shy.
So, we have a shark in Pantherland. I think that's what's happening there. But he really likes the panthers, so that's good. Yeah, we have three Panthers up here, so... Oh, four, because his kids went there too. Oh, and one Norco. And one Roosevelt. Sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry. We're all represented here. Okay. School Spotlight, California Dashboard, English Learner Progress Indicator. Dr. Lisa Simon.
Thank you, President Ibarra. It's always a pleasure to recognize students and staff and admin and teachers, the entire learning community for the hard work and effort that they've put in to improve learning. And we have some schools we want to recognize where our students have made great progress. And I'd like to call Carlos Flores to the podium and he will be making some introductions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and Madam President. I think tonight, what you'll see is, if you allow me to, a couple of minutes to put our students' achievement into context. What you'll see tonight is some evidence of really extraordinary student achievement that's made possible through our leadership of our school administrators and teachers. So, in perspective, to put things in context, the California State Dashboard uses what's called the English Learner Progress Indicator. This is the only metric specific to English learners on the dashboard. And it's a comparison of a student's performance from one year on the ALPAC to the second year on the ALPAC. And this is really unique in that it's a matched pair. It's actually one student's scores compared to the next year. And so, on this sort of expectation, it's an expectation that a student English language development goes up a level each year. And so, you can see that there. There's actually six levels for LP because the research says that language acquisition takes five to seven years. So, to show progress, we're looking at improvement one year over the next. For Corona and Norco Unified, for all of our schools, if we look at 2019, this is the most recent two years of data that we have. Fifty percent of our students or English learners were making progress, one level at least, one LP level. On that lower part of that picture, you can see that that puts us in the medium category, right? Between forty-five and fifty-five percent. But the most recent data, which is 2021 and 2022, our students increased to fifty-four percent. And that is significant because it's a four percent. It puts us really close to the high category. And that's the highest measure of all districts within Riverside County is actually fifty-four percent. Given that this happened during a pandemic, it really shows that our teachers first and foremost really stepped up to the challenge, that our parents and our students are achieving at higher levels because of that. So, just a quick comparison, if Corona and Norco, we look at that data in context of the twenty-three other districts, we really are in a league of our own at fifty-four percent. The closest comparable would be Paris Elementary. That's an elementary district, so the data tends to be a little bit higher. But you can see for your reference that that's where we are in comparison. Not on the slide today, but if we put San Bernardino County on there, we would be number two. And so, two counties, Riverside, San Bernardino, behind an elementary-only district. Okay, so pretty extraordinary achievement by all of our schools. But tonight, it's not about our district. It's really about spotlighting the achievement of a couple of schools. And so, first on that list, I'd like to invite Dr. Strausser and her team up to the front. And so, while she's coming up here, I'd like to kind of walk you through what their data looks like. So, in 2019, in 2019, they had fifty-three point five percent of their students making progress. That puts them in the medium. It almost puts them in the high category. They're doing great work, right? But in 2022, they went from fifty-three point five to sixty-nine percent, right? Very high. So, that's an extraordinary achievement for any school. And so, we'd like to invite Dr. Strausser up here for some words of wisdom.
Well, thank you. And of course, we appreciate under the leadership and support over school port of Dr. Brian Rostro and all of Executive Cabinet. I'm here to represent Stallings along with some of our staff. We have Myra Orozco, who was our Assistant Principal last year. We have Beth Escaville, who's our Assistant Principal this year. We have Lisa Morano, our sixth-grade teacher, and Maria Valdez, our Par educator. And so, these are just a few faces to join us, to represent. It's really all of Stallings and as Carlos said during the pandemic, how difficult it was. Our par educators and our teachers worked tirelessly to pull small groups constantly on Zoom. So, it's nice to have a little bit of recognition for our kids and for our school because the day in and day out, the hard work that happens all the time, we don't get to see until something like this happens, then it's like a blooming. All the seeds you planted, the watering, the tender care. So, just once again, thank you, everyone, for your leadership and support. And I'm proud of us. Yay!
Dr. Strausser, appreciate it. So, we're going to move on to our next school site. And so, Rondo doesn't have a 2019 dataset because they were not open yet. But we still believe that they are worthy of this recognition because they had seventy-seven point nine percent of their students make progress. Pretty extraordinary. If we take them by themselves out of the district, they would be a district of themselves. They would be the highest achieving district in the state. Pretty extraordinary achievement on their part. And so, we'd like to invite, unfortunately, Dr. Trevor Dietrich is at Science Camp today with sixth graders in Idowild. So, in his place are his administrators and teachers. Dr. Ronnie Mc... It's going to come up, as well as Eileen Wonderly.
I'd like to thank the board for their visionary, for our English language learners advocacy. This was all in part of our teachers', you know, tier-one best instruction, the hard work of the students. And our EL contact and I, we go teacher by teacher and make sure that the teachers create targeted goals for the students each trimester. And the students are all part of that, is all part of the leader-in-me process as well. So, it has been a concerted effort by all parties and we thank you for your advocacy. Thank you.
So, our next school is Rosa Parks. You look at their 2019 data, forty-four point eight percent of students were making progress. In 2022, fast forward just a little bit, sixty-seven point one, right? So, pretty significant. Remember that the very highest in the state would be sixty-five, right? If we look at it, that's the very high category. So, sixty-seven point one is pretty impressive. It's even more impressive context as to where they were, just pre-pandemic. So, we'd like to invite Mrs. Celia Verduzco up to the podium. With her today's for Assistant Principal as well.
I'm short, so I'm going to bend the mic a little bit. I just want to thank the board and Executive Cabinet for all of your leadership and support. We are very excited for this award. I want to thank, well, here with me today, I have Ms. Murna and Ms. Evelyn, our amazing paraprofessionals who work directly with our students and Ms. Cardenas as well, our Assistant Principal who works with our students as well. A huge shout-out and thank you to them and to our teachers. Without them, we would not be here today. A huge shout-out and thank you to our students. Without their hard work, we wouldn't be here today and our families who support us as well. So, thank you very much. We're excited for this award today.
And last but not least is a middle school. And so, when we think about English language development, it tends to be harder in middle school, right? Middle school is a challenging environment for many of our students. So, our next school up here is Auburndale. When we look at Auburndale, 2019, they were doing some good work, work to be proud of. Certainly fifty-eight point one above the district average, above the state average, above the county average at that point in time. But this last comparison, it took them from fifty-eight point one to sixty-eight point one, right? So, pretty, you can see in the categories, right? Pretty significant growth as well. And if they were a middle school, there is no other middle school in Riverside or San Bernardino County that has comparable performance on this measure for English learners. So, especially proud of them. And so, I'd like to welcome to the podium, Ms. Veronica Rodriguez and her team.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Executive Cabinet, for allowing us to be here to really recognize the hard work that our teachers and our staff have been doing this last year. Let me just introduce a few folks. So, we have our Assistant Principal, Dr. Farrar, our Dean, Ms. Diaz, our TSA, Stephen Luera, and then one of our ELD teachers, Amber Baltiera. This definitely has been a work and a vision. Our TSA, I jokingly said, "I'm going to throw it to you, Stephen. You can talk all about it." And he said, "Please don't." So, don't worry, I'm not going to make you, not today. So, last year, Stephen took over as our TSA and in that moment, we talked about our vision for what we needed to see for English learners. He was able to take that vision that we spoke of and really put action into it, bringing strategic work, planning instructional practices for our ELD teachers and our ELA department, which is difficult. We have a lot of English learners, but on top of that, a lot of newcomers. And it's true newcomers, right? So, his ability to kind of just wrap his arms around everyone and provide that support. Huge last year, our ELD teachers speak of it daily. We've never been so supported. So, we're grateful for the work we're doing and our staff to be able to see that the hard work they put in last year has really paid off. So, we start ALPAC testing tomorrow and we expect to see the same thing again. But thank you very much and for the ability to be recognized.
That's all I have for you guys. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
That was a great report. Great. Presentation to the board, 2022-23 second interim budget report. Ms. Dahlia Wademala.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to invite Melissa Elwood, and she will give us the presentation on our second interim.
Good evening. We'll start with our assumptions for our second interim general fund budget. In terms of the local control funding formula, from first interim, our COLA and our LCFF investment remain the same as first interim at 6.56 and 6.7%. What has been updated here is our unduplicated pupil percentage. Now that we have certified our enrollment data, our unduplicated pupil percentage has been updated to 72%. We've also updated our average daily attendance, now that we've certified our first period attendance, and that has been adjusted to 47,493. We had anticipated at first interim a little bit higher. We were expecting a little bit closer to pre-pandemic attendance rates, but they haven't quite materialized yet. We've also updated our federal, state, and local revenues for our one-time entitlements. And then as our routine repair maintenance is always 3%, as we adjust our expenditures, the value of the routine repair maintenance contribution is also increased. Here we have our projected revenues. Those three columns in the middle, it's our 45-day budget, our first interim budget, and our second interim budget. That last column on the right is the variance between first interim and second interim. And you'll see that the largest increase is on that LCFF line of 29 million. That's 8 million in LCFF supplemental dollars and 21 million in LCFF concentration dollars for this year. And as we update the revenues for those LCFF supplemental and concentration dollars, we've also updated the expenditures. And you'll see that reflected here, mostly in that books and supplies line, that middle line there. And we also have an increase in our capital outlay expenditures of, budgeted of 10 million. So because concentration funding is new to our district, we wanted to provide a little bit of information on the calculation of that. For the supplemental grant, we take our ADA values, and then it's 20% of the base rate times our unduplicated pupil percentage. And at this point, the funding level is the rolling three-year average of the UPP. So the 72% that we identified earlier, that is our single-year rate. We're funded on a three-year rolling average. For the concentration grant, it is 65% of the base grant times that ADA, and then it's based on our unduplicated pupil percentage in excess of 55%. Our historical unduplicated pupil percentage, we've been in the 45, 46, 47 range. And then in 21, 22, we increased to 65%. And this year, we're at 72%. So the average of those last three years is 61%. And new in the 21, 22 year is our use of an alternate methodology for collecting the data related to free and reduced lunch. And that's in the form of our school funding form, which is part of our enrollment process. So it's another checkbox that families have when they're enrolling students to provide that data for us. And a big shout out to our nutrition services and our IT departments who were instrumental in making that happen. And we also were able to take advantage of two new laws this year related to our average daily attendance. So instead of feeling that sharp cliff of our decline in enrollment, it's smoothed it out a little bit with the two new laws. The first law is changing from being funded on the current year or the prior year ADA. We now have the ability, a third option of funding on the three prior years, an average of the three prior years. And then we were also able to utilize some attendance relief in the 21, 22 year that is reflected in that three-year average. The supplemental and concentration funds, they must be invested in the LCAP, in the Local Control Accountability Plan, which is principally directed to our unduplicated students. And Dr. Charlotte Capps does a phenomenal job with that LCAP committee to identify our needs and the actions necessary to get those desired outcomes and meet those metrics that we're required to. And that includes identifying areas where we may need to invest a little bit more funds or maybe keep the same or potentially reduce funds. And that's part of the contingency plan because these funds are based on factors. Our ADA, our enrollment, our UPP, and COLA, funded COLA from the state. So if any of those factors are changed, it reduces the dollar value of those supplemental and concentration grants. As part of AB 1200, in addition to the current year budget, we also project out the next two out-years. The first out-year is the 23, 24 year. And here, the change from first interim is that COLA has increased to 8.13%, and that's based on the governor's January proposal. And then at first interim, we only had one year of that increased trend in our UPP rate. And so we had estimated the out-years at 50%, and we've updated that out-year to 65%. And as we progress through the years, we'll refine that figure. We're also estimating ADA decline of 500. And then we've made adjustments to the federal, state, and local revenues. Associated with that decline in enrollment is a decline in FTE. But then we have an increase in our step and column advancement. And from first interim, we've had an increase in the PERS rate for this year. We've also increased expenditures for utilities and other contracted services as well as transportation. And then again, as those expenditures increase, the value of the 3% routine repair maintenance contribution increases. In our next out-year, the COLA has decreased to 3.54%. And again, we've updated our unduplicated pupil percentage to 65% in this year and a projected ADA decline of 500. And minor adjustments to federal, state, and local revenues. And again, we have similar expenditure adjustments, the decrease of 19 FTEs, step and column advancement for employees, PERS, utilities, contracted services. Here we have our multi-year projections across the current year and the next three years. And if you'll notice there, in the lighter gray line in the middle, we are projecting a positive fund balance across all three years. And the four lines at the bottom are components of that ending fund balance. You'll note that the very bottom line, we are meeting our 2% required reserve across all three years. And the next slide, we have our other funds, includes adult education, the cafeteria fund, our facilities funds, and our self-insurance fund. And all of these funds are projected to have a positive ending fund balance in the 22, 23 year. That, I'll like to turn it over to Dahlia for state budget economic outlook.
Thank you, Melissa. So I just wanted to give some perspective. Although Melissa here is providing, and this is great news for the district with going into concentration, receiving the additional funding, I just want to put some caution out there because as the projections within this forecast, the second interim are all based on the January governor's budget. So he was proposing the budget for next year in January. But since then, there are some risk factors really with the projection at the state level. So the February revenues through February for the state level are coming in $4 billion, $4 billion below the forecast that the governor had projected in the budget. The other thing, as you know, the income tax filing is being delayed or deferred till October. And with that, instead of receiving the revenues or at least getting the estimates of the income tax filings by April 15th, we're now looking at October 16th. And the state revenues are mainly built by the income tax. Almost 75% of the state revenues rely on the state income tax. So that gives, that's several risk factors so that even at the May revise, the projection will look different than it did in January. The other thing too is even at the state budget adoption in June, they would be kind of, I don't want to say flying blind, but they're not going to have those estimates for state income tax even at that point. So the projection is going to be an assumption, and it would require further, you know, adjustments. Also, the legislative analyst report that came out as they're analyzing the revenue and looking at the budget deficit at the state level, they're suggesting that even though COLA, as we have here at 8.13% projection, they may not be, they're suggesting to not fully fund the COLA in the next projection because in order for them to not have a deficit, they would think it would fall somewhere around 6.4. So we'll see kind of what comes up at the May revise, but we're just very cautious. And we want to celebrate the good news, and we know that, you know, we're starting to put forward plans, or we're looking through the LCAP process as we're going into concentration, but really looking into those out-years and how we can, you know, protect ourselves with our finances.
How would you tally or corroborate the declining ADA and the increased budget, you know, from 2020 to 2024 and then the 20, you know, so how do you tally that?
Yes, so great question. So obviously, as Melissa was explaining, there's the ADA, the new laws that had come out, which allowed us an average of three years. So that actually helped us kind of with a soft landing. So even though we were declining, we were able to protect ourselves with the formula where we can take the 88% from the 1920 school year. And so then, typically, if we did not go into concentration, you would see a decline in those two out-years. But because we have concentration funding coming in, it kind of offset a little bit the decline of enrollment. So it's the net impact which is showing an increase on the books right now because of the concentration funding.
And the what, the why and the how of decreasing ADA? What is that? Is that natural because of pandemic or is that people moving from our area?
Yes, the projection for ADA, I mean, we've been declining, and we project about 500 for next year, and that's across the state. And when we look at numbers, actually, we're one of the highest in the county with our ADA percentage. So even though we're not quite at pre-pandemic levels with our 88%, we're actually doing a pretty good job because a lot of school districts have not caught up with that 88%.
Lastly, can you elaborate on the unduplicated pupil percentage? Because in every page, there is that.
Yes.
You know, what is that? Can you, just for us to?
Absolutely, yes. So the unduplicated pupil percentage includes our English learners, our low-income students, and our foster youth. And pre-pandemic, we were at about 47%. As we went into the pandemic, the conditions changed, and at the same time, there was universal meals where we were giving, you know, it's free meals for all, which kind of canceled out the meal application process. So we needed to find a way to be able to collect that data to continue because it's a big factor in how we receive our funding. So as Melissa mentioned, thanks to all the departments, really, we had communications office, our child nutrition department, our IT department, we all kind of said, how do we do this? Because, you know, you don't want to be passing out a form, please fill this out. And so we kind of incorporated all the registration process online. So they're able to provide that data, which is information that we tell them helps us for school funding as well as helps the families as well to qualify for different programs like CalFresh where they can receive other resources for their home. So with that combined, and obviously with the impact of the economy, together, we're able to, now we're at 72% for that unduplicated count. So it went from 47 to 72. Although it was decreasing each year, we weren't there yet in concentration because it requires three years average to get to that percentage. So we're over that percentage now.
All right, thank you.
The unduplicated, oh, no, 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 you go ahead. The unduplicated funds, they could be used in only specific areas? Can it be used on buildings, increased wages? What is it going to be used on?
The, so the supplemental and concentration grants are only to be used through the LCAP process. So now that we learned, you know, our numbers got certified, we learned we're in concentration. So Dr. Capps will be working with the LCAP advisory to look at all the priorities district-wide, and then we would incorporate that funding through LCAP. So as far as buildings, usually, capital funding is not part of it, but it would be for helping, primarily for the disadvantaged population, for the unduplicated counts. So it'd be programs, it could be, you know, different positions, resources for the schools and so on, school safety, all sorts of things that can go into LCAP. So it could be initiatives that are already there, and we would just expand them or add more funding, or it could be new initiatives that we would add to the LCAP.
I just wanted to clarify, make sure that I understand this correctly, that based on this number, the 72% is based on a single year, the 61% is the average for the three years rolling. So would I be correct in saying then that in a single year, 72% of our students in the district are either English learners, low-income, or foster youth?
Correct. For this year, they are. That's for 22, 23. And since it's the first year we hit that number, we're just being conservative, and next year, we're estimating 65% in case the number, you know, drops because the year prior was in the 60s.
I guess I just wanted to make the point that I think that that's telling in more ways than one. It's an interesting fact, but thank you.
So adding to that, so the last two years, out of the three-year rolling, the lowest percentage was the three years ago, right?
Yes, so it's been going up each year.
Right, right. So we can probably predict conservatively that we would at least next year also be receiving those funds.
Concentration funds, yeah.
As we were in the 60s and the 70s.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're over 55%, you then receive concentration funding for that district. From 55 to now 72%, we would receive concentration grant funding for that.
Thank you.
So we will keep getting the concentration funds as long as we're low or?
So we have, yeah, we have to be over 55% unduplicated count to receive concentration funding on a three-year average. So right now, we're at, the 72% makes us into the 61 or 62%, I believe, three-year average. So even if it dropped below 72 next year, on a three-year average, we would still be in concentration. And the whole idea of three-year is it allows for districts for that soft landing because it's hard, obviously, you build programs, and then it's too late by the time you find your new number for next year to adjust. So it gives you that time to make any adjustments.
I think it's important to note too, just that, like you were saying, and I don't know, it was in here somewhere, that obviously, the purpose in this is because these kids need extra supports. So I'm assuming obviously, that's also why there's some parameters on where and how we spend those concentration funds.
Absolutely, yes. And that's guided by the LCAP process.
Thank you.
My question is on the reserves. Currently, it shows us at 18.7, but the projected budget is a decrease to 17 million. That is, that doesn't mean we're pulling from the reserves, right?
Okay, so for the reserves, the four rows from the bottom up are the components of the total reserve. So the very bottom line is just the 2% required reserve. So we just, whatever the ending reserve, we have to reserve 2% of it. So you'll see kind of as the fund balance, if it decreases, then the reserves goes down because it's just a function of that.
Gotcha.
And lastly, because for a long time, we cannot secure the concentration funds. It's always LA, Long Beach, right? So is that indicative of the trend in our community?
Yeah, like I said, I think it's a combination of the economic state, you know, right now with the economy, but also the increased efforts of collecting that data. Because before, we used to have to rely on the meal applications, and sometimes parents didn't want to fill that out. And so when it's part of the application process for registration, and it's just, it's at their option to fill, but it's right there and it's automated, it helps make it more convenient for them to complete. So we're able to gather more data. That's what's helped. So we're able to gather more data. That's what's helping us.
More data and the community is really changing.
Yeah.
Because, because those categories of difference, like, uh, special kids or, or EL are now increasing in number. And that's why we are getting into the concentration.
It, it's mostly the income portion of it. So because unduplicated is the free and reduced and the, uh, English learners and foster youth, the increase has been in, in, in collecting the data, the income data.
All right. So just to give us some perspective of, of surrounding districts, Alverd, are they, they've received concentration funds, right?
I'm sorry, Alverd, yes.
And then?
There's only a few that were not concentration. I'm aware that Marietta also increased their unduplicated count. I don't know if they got into concentration, but they also were able to increase that through collecting data and then our district.
Okay. So Riverside County, the majority are concentrations. So that we were kind of, um,
Yeah.
playing not on a, an evil, a level playing field, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos to you guys for collecting that data because obviously that was key. So, great job.
Okay, CNUSD Pupil Transportation Plan. Ms. Dahlia?
It's all, yeah. Tracy Payne and Leroy Welch. And so they'll be presenting to you the transportation plan that we are required to present to the board before April first, so.
Great, thank you Dahlia. Good evening, Madam President, Board members. We're here to give you a transportation update this evening. We have new education code thirty-eight nine hundred point one that outlines our home-to-school transportation. So the program has, um, been generally unfunded. This new education code allows us to receive up to sixty percent reimbursement of our expenditures. Overview of our financial, um, outlook in transportation. The funding is based on last year's budget, our expense, expenditures, so twenty-one, twenty-two. We had fifteen point three million dollars. The sixty percent allowance is combined with our LCSF, LCFF combined total, which will be nine point two million in reimbursement. And so we still have the remaining six point one million contribution from our general fund reserve. Um, next year, we have expenditures at fifteen point nine million. So you'll see that difference of six hundred thousand and that's just based on the increase of our operational costs. So we have to do a few things in order to receive this reimbursement. One, we have to develop a plan in consultation with our educational partners. We're, um, a step ahead because we already have board policy that outlines the majority of what the plan requires, which is to prioritize our transportation for our K through six students and really the access for our, our unduplicated students, which now includes our English learners at no cost. And then we're here tonight before you to report out and, um, ask for the approval under the consent tonight. So you'll have in your handout a copy of the plan and a copy of that feedback that we've received in consultation in developing the plan. I'm going to turn it over to Leroy and he's going to overview what we do now and what's, um, looking ahead, our next steps.
Good evening. Thanks again for having us. Uh, so in the process of developing the plan, we went, start with, uh, the board policy that we currently have in place under thirty-five twenty. And so what we currently have right now is we provide transportation services for our elementary students who reside more than two miles from their designated homeschool. And then for our secondary students who reside in our outlying areas of our district, we also provide no-cost, uh, transportation for our foster youth students, students experiencing homelessness and students who have transportation services as a part of their IEP. And so working with our, uh, educational partners, kudos to the, to the LCAP committee for, uh, getting us onto their agenda and working with us in collaboration in the process and giving us really good feedback in, uh, better understanding that some of the needs of our community. And so we were able to work together on February ninth and ask them for their, their thoughts and considerations and feedback. And so we've identified some next steps and then some challenges as we continue to move forward with our plan annually. Uh, what we came up with is we continue to monitor for funding sources at the legislation at the state level to help offset the cost for transportation. We, um, have a really good department, as I mentioned before, at transportation and we have a good partnership with our contractor, First Student. And we continuously look at our routes, we look for efficiencies, we look for ways to maximize, maximize the services we provide to families within the given resources that we currently have. And so I know some of you are aware that we are experiencing a driver shortage that we've been kind of going through for the last year. And we continue to work in meetings and consultation with our contractor to help shore up those gaps. So as the driver staffing and funding increases and we're able to do more, uh, we will be able to utilize First Student, First Student for our trips, for our field trips, for our school sites and obviously for our athletic teams as well. We will continue to explore possibilities of adding routes in our congested traffic areas that was shared with us, especially in our East Vale community, which we know, uh, you guys are experiencing. And then exploring, offering, uh, possible services for unduplicated students who attend special programs. Um, as noted, some of the challenges that we do have are the limited resources. We do still continue to experience a driver shortage, but I'm here to tell you, we're hopeful that we see the light at the end of the tunnel. And so we have some things in place. So we're hoping to see some differences, uh, as early as this summer, okay? Uh, and then there's, there's other things that aren't necessarily affecting us, but do affect our contractor with supply chain, being able to take some of their older buses offline, bring some newer buses in. And then, uh, even if they are able to bring in new buses and if we are able to expand later on, the ability to be able to, uh, park those buses. But I'm appreciative because I know that our facilities department is in consultation as well and looking for ways to, to find property for us to, um, kind of make sure we have a place to park the buses as well. And then of course, the, the reimbursement is at sixty percent, it's not a hundred percent. And so it doesn't take over the entire cost. So in summary, as we look at some of the good news, so what the state has asked us in developing this plan, we already do as a district. Uh, by and large, most of what we were asked to consider in putting together the plan falls under what we currently have under Board Policy thirty-five twenty. Uh, the good news is we're able to offer no-cost busing for our unduplicated population. And so we're able to include our, uh, English learner students in that category as well. And so as we continue to, to look at this annually, we'll continue to work with our educational partners with the LCAP committee and then we'll continue to bring it to the board.
We're happy to take any questions you may have.
I have a question. So, um, unduplicated students on special, in special classes, is that like bringing over the students from Home Gardens to Corona High that are in dual immersion? Because that's a special class and some of those kids are unduplicated students.
Right, so we would definitely explore those, um, opportunities. So we'd work with the program administrator, identify the students and then just do an assessment to see if we have the resources available. So those are the things that we would look at continuously. So as the need arises and it's brought to our attention, I know that we're aware of some, um, students in that situation, unduplicated or just, you know, our regular students. And so we'll always do an assessment based on that need and see if we have the resources available.
Because I'm, you know, I, I keep saying this, we're building these programs. You know, like at Corona High, we're trying to build the program and we're not helping a lot. And I know there's not a lot of students that need the transportation, but I mean, even if it's twenty twenty-five, that, that's a big number to me. That's going to be less at Corona High. They're dropping and they're just not going to go, you know? And, and here we are, spending money, building these programs and.
Yeah, I mean, we understand that transportation is a key part of the educational process. You know, they're the first that they see in the morning, they get them to the school. Sometimes they're the last, but it's getting them to school and to those special programs. So as, uh, things shift and Leroy can attest to this, every year, there, there's changes in those routes. And, and so as we have the resources available and as the drivers, um, start to, to come on board to make us whole, then we can look at, um, if, if there's opportunities there or, or just even looking at the routes and seeing if there's opportunities to, to get them on something that might already exist. So I, I know we're aware of that and we're working with that program specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, you guys. And I know busing is extremely expensive. I know when, uh, Mr. Vandrisca and Sam and I, we were working to, to try and get additional routes from Temescal Valley. John, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, do you remember how much to, to add a, a route?
I can answer that.
Was it like eight hundred, was it?
It's eighty thousand, but that cost is going up. So we have to account for the cost of fuel, the increase in the, um, the cost of the driver and just the, the supply line, the buses as well. So we anticipate that to increase, but currently it's approximately eighty thousand to have a full bus.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we have the bus and if we have the driver.
Right, right. So I know that it, it's expensive and so I appreciate all the effort. My, my question is, um, on the looking ahead, the next steps. And it says utilizing First Student for athletic and field trips. So how is it decided what athletic teams get buses and, and don't get buses? Um, I know that when my son played volleyball at Centennial, they did not get buses for, for district events. They got bused for, for King. So these students were walking, you know, from Centennial to Santiago or trying to figure out how to get from Santiago to, to Roosevelt. And so, you know, my concern is, is safety, um, and liability if we have a group of students in a, in a car driving. So I, I guess my question is, how is it decided what, what athletic teams get the busing?
It's a priority for us, but the process, I can, I can talk and Leroy can speak to it. So it's basically whatever we have, um, in that system of the request, we work on first. And then there's, there's, um, other things that come up at the last minute depending on, you know, CIF and things like that. So it's basically working with all those vendor contractors because right now First Student isn't able to do that for us and we have that relationship. So we're in line with all of the other, um, districts in the area to try to get those resources first. And, and safety is first, cost isn't. So that's how it's determined. And, and so once it's booked for that team, we can't take it away from that team to have it someone else that might be later. So it's really just getting on the phone and calling those, those resources and trying to really look at, is there anybody else that we can go to? Can we borrow from other yards? Can we, can we talk to other vendors that we might not use now? Leroy, do you have anything to add in that special?
No, it's just been, it's been a little bit of a challenge this year because of the driver shortage, uh, home-to-school. It was our first priority, making sure that we got the kids to school safely and home safely. And then, uh, everything else was, was a secondary and a bonus. But we have, we have been vetting through more contractors as the years has gone through, as we've gone through to make sure that, that they meet the requirements for the state, that they have the insurance policies and things in place. But it is a little bit of a competition with other school districts in being able to secure that budget.
So what does this year look like? Let's say, so we've had fall sports, um, I'm, I'm thinking what, ten, there's probably tennis and there's water polo. And then we've had soccer and winter and, um, water polo. Are tho, how are those kids getting, uh, again, let's say from Santiago to Roosevelt for a, a match or a meet? You know, how, how did that work this year?
Take requests from the school site that lets us know what the competition, um, times are, start times, pickup times. And then, uh, we order the buses from there.
Okay, okay. Is that a school site responsibility to pick up the, the, the budget for, for those?
If, if I can just jump in a little bit. So th, this challenge goes back to the recession of two thousand and seven when transportation was cut across California. And so as a result, um, yes, our, every, every comprehensive high school has a budget for transportation and for athletics. So it, it's a pretty hefty budget, but there's never enough. But they do have it, uh, for transportation and, and the athletic directors, working with their assistants, they will go ahead and plan out, uh, the transportation for, especially for the away games that take quite a bit of travel. But no doubt about it, to, to your point, we have more than ever before. We do have, uh, parents or kids driving to events. And that's been going on now since, uh, probably the last fifteen-plus years. And it's, um, it's unfortunate, but those, those are one of the things that happened back with the recession of two thousand and seven.
The bright light looking forward is that we're working with First Student and they have, um, identified a recruiter just for Corona Norco to get those drivers. Every month, they're onboarding new drivers and they have a relationship with CHP to get them to pass the behind-the-wheel. So they have the, the book part, you know, the classroom and then the behind-the-wheel. So that's why we anticipate summer twenty twenty-three, we'll be whole and we'll be able to utilize them for, yeah, uh, uh, trips as well. So we'll be able to lean on First Student for the transportation in the district so they're not having to contract out, um, buses between two high schools locally. We'll use that for what we need possibly to go further distances. So we're working with them.
Can I jump in? Um, I just wanted to clarify because, uh, back a minute ago in what you said, is it accurate then to say that financially, I mean, we're in a good place? We're just getting this, um, funding that was, you know, wasn't anticipated? I mean, generally speaking, are we, we're just short buses and drivers? I mean, is it, I, I don't mean to incredibly simplify it, but I mean, I'm thinking about like these, the, um, the unduplicated students or the English learners that says they no longer have to pay for it, um, or it's not a, you know, um, I don't.
No cost?
No, no cost, no cost. But I'm just wondering about like availability. I mean, even if it's no cost to them, is it available for those students? Or even, you know, I, I just can't help but think of the two-mile radius is a long way for a little one. Um, you know, and I think I just, for me, it really is about safety. We joke, my, my husband and I, we grew up going to Norco High and going down Second Street. And, um, all of the construction that's going on there, we unfortunately see oftentimes kids riding their bikes to and from Norco High down Second Street, which is very scary, um, because it's just, you know, it's, it's tore up. And so, you know, my concern really is, is safety. And, and you know, I just, I feel like especially in the last few years, I, I far too often see kids going the other way when I'm driving places. You know, they're not going to school, they're going elsewhere. Um, and so I guess I'm just wondering, you, you said twenty twenty-three, summer, maybe better situation for the availability. Um, it's just looking to the future, looking to the next couple of years. Do you foresee us being able to expand? Um, I mean, the cost is one, one thing, but really, like you said, it's less about cost and to me, it's more about safety. So I'm just wondering your predictions on that.
Thank you. Great question. So twofold. One, um, the program, the home-to-school is separate than here, um, looking at the athletic trips and field trips. So home-to-school has been generally unfunded. So we, um, fund that through our general, um, the contribution from the general fund reserve. Um, so this sixty percent allowance will definitely help that. Um, talking about safety, we don't want our athletic directors to consider, um, the cost because it's such a huge cost to charter out these buses first before they think of safety. So that was that comment to just, we've let our athletic directors know because we meet with them quarterly, safety first. Um, we know that there is an increased cost and we, we're projecting for that. So you see that in our twenty-two, twenty-three, is that, that six hundred thousand? That's the increase in the cost of just operational. Um, expanding, yes, those challenges are to have the buses, to have the drivers. And we follow board policy. So the transportation plan now follows that board policy. So we would look to that in the future as, uh, resources and funding become available at every opportunity to, to expand when we can.
I've been receiving the same emails that Ms. Mary is receiving from the Home Gardens Academy students and, um, but they make a great point. And so, and I don't know how much that, of that is going on throughout the district. Um, they've just been vocal. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is aligned with what, uh, President Ivar started. You, you may, it seems to me that you may, you may do some prioritizing and really identifying so you can have a, a good data of students who belong to those categories. We kept mentioning EL, but what are the EL? Are they, maybe most EL are, maybe this is a generalization, are children from low-income families. So we, we need, we need those data, really identify the EL, the children of poverty or maybe that's not the right word, maybe children from low-income families. Because if we truly want this program to be of service to kids who needed the most, we need to have data, list of kids and then prioritize because we have all kinds of needs for transportation. But since this is a service for kids to learn, I think we need to do a little bit of deepening our data information and categories of kids that we want to serve.
Well said. You're exactly right. So that's what this transportation plan focuses on. So that's that difference and our board policy was almost there. But now we have the ability and we will be able to identify those students and market that transportation bus pass at no cost directly to them. Because as we find, sometimes they might not be aware. So we, we're going to do a better job of marketing. We're going to know that they qualify for it, so we're going to send that to them. Um, instead of them. We're gonna know that they qualify for it, so we're gonna send that to them, um, instead of them, and we'll know, no cost upfront. So this year, we didn't know English, designated English learners were gonna be no cost. So we're able to refund, um, about a hundred and fifty-one families. Um, so that's a plus. And so next year, they won't pay upfront, we'll already know that it's at no cost. So that won't be a barrier.
So maybe we need to do, reach out instead of them, because culturally, they may not come to us. So you gotta reach out if you have the data.
We'll send them the link, and we'll work with our communications team on other areas, just like what we did on the, the change in our registration process. So another, another, uh, collaboration.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Um, I do like the fact that you have, that you're willing to explore possibilities of adding routes in congested traffic areas. I know this is a huge concern for the city of Eastville with thousands of students trying to get to schools all at the same time. Um, something that I hear often, so I'm happy to hear that.
Definitely.
One more question, and, and, uh, again, because I, I just thinking about the safety and liability of having students walk, you know, to various campuses and, and, uh, so I'm going old school, and you could correct me if this is still possible or not. But, you know, I know that we used to have vans, and the, and the coach would, you know, drive smaller teams, golf teams or wrestling teams or whatever to, you know, to, to events in the vans. And, um, I, and i- is that something that's still utilized, or is it contractual? Or, because I know, looking out here, we have a lot of vans, and, and so I'm just wondering, again, I, I would rather have a, a, a coach driving these, these students than, you know, maybe multiple parents or ki- or kids themselves who may not even supposed to be have, having passengers. So I, I don't know what, what that looks like, if that's something that can be looked at, or?
We, we do look at that. And so that's one of our, um, our resources, that we would rent a van through Enterprise, because we're transferring that insurance. And then we, um, vet our coaches, so they do have to have the DMV poll, the driver safety. So sometimes it's multiple. So it depends on the size of the team. So if we could rent three, four vans to get them there, especially, uh, we had a challenge this weekend, that was something we were looking at, like as a Plan B, because CIF, right? And so we're like, we have to get them there, and if there's no other way, then let's re- let's put ourselves on notice that we're gonna reserve these vans. So we, we definitely do that. Just the size of the team sometimes is a challenge.
So we can't use our vans?
So the vans that we have here are separate than the vans that we have at Transportation. So Transportation has separate vans that are insured to transport students.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very informative.
Oh.
Daniel, I'm sorry, Daniel.
Uh, no problem. So you talked about exploring the possibility of adding routes to congested traffic areas. I just want a little bit more information. Is there a need for that?
The idea behind it is that maybe for, let's say, thirty parent cars, you'd have one bus. So that would reduce the, the amount of cars coming into the parking lot, is having those students ride a bus instead of having the carpool or the single, single student in a car.
So.
To reduce the traffic at that arrival time. It's fast, though. If you ever see buses come in, they drop those kids and they're out of there.
Yeah, so when you say that thirty-car difference, is there that group of students that would qualify for transportation that we can cut from that line? Because if they don't qualify, it's like, we're providing the buses, but it's not really solving that issue.
Exactly. So that would be a future assessment that we would do, um, when, when we're at that point. So we haven't run the numbers yet, so that's just a generalization of the idea behind reducing congestion and traffic with adding more buses. But no, no strong figures yet.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, we have a lot of questions tonight. So that's good. Superintendent's report, Dr. Buonrostro.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam President. Wonderful, wonderful questions. Um, we, uh, anticipated those questions. Um, the, um, class, uh, the specific program that you were referring to from Home Gardens, uh, my understanding is there are forty-three students. Thirty-seven of them would like to go to Corona High. And so we're working with Dr. Gonzalez and identify those needs. I say that because it, it goes back to what you said, Madam President, what, uh, Dr. Lala said. We need to know who those families are, we need to communicate, we need to work with them. My point is, we are working with them. And you guys are right on the spot. That's, that's what the funding is there for, for the programs and for the children. So thank you so much for, for your leadership there. Okay, so tonight's superintendent report. I, you know, I need to give kudos to, to Carlos Flores. He's, he's over there, he's, 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 he's being humble. But, um, I've been in this district for twenty-four years, and the data that was displayed today is not easy. I was an English learner teacher myself. It's not easy to get all of our students in the, the, and it only happens because we have quality teachers, quality assistants, but also quality leadership. And I want to give, uh, Carlos credit. Obviously, I want to give all of our schools, uh, Auburndale, Rosa Parks, Stallings, Rondo. Uh, and, and there's a whole bunch of other schools that are doing just great work in, 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 in our district. So Carlos, kudos to you. Great job, man. Appreciate it. Yeah. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Carlos is super keen on developing systems and looking at data. So I want to thank our Board of Education for participating in, uh, in our, uh, Governance Workshop two weeks ago on February twenty-first. I thought it was, uh, super successful, so thank you so much. Also, uh, you've been out there to all these events. I do just want to congratulate our Spelling Bee champion, uh, Avigi Randawa. So the, the powerhouse Randawa continues here in CNUSD as, as he goes on to, to the county. And, uh, so congratulations to him. Also, congratulations to our, our runner-up from CFIS, uh, Megana Ramaruhu. So congratulations, Megana. Also, Reflections, I want to give, uh, thanks to our PTA Council for hosting another extremely successful Reflections Night. And, uh, so there was great presentations, music, dance performances. And thank you, uh, Mrs. Ibarra and Mrs. Nicola for being there and presenting the awards to, to our students and families. Also, last week, we were at Home Gardens and the School Smarts Program. And so kudos to Anna Mesa for coordinating this, uh, fabulous program that we've been running in partnership with PTA. So, uh, and as I mentioned, uh, we were there. I got to share what the superintendent does. And Dr. Gomez, excuse me, Dr. Gonzalez shared the principal role. We had a teacher share her role. And then Mrs. Ibarra and Mrs. Nicola, you shared the role of the superintendent. And our parents were super, uh, engaged and asked gr- great questions, and, uh, it was quite a long evening. So kudos to our parents there and in Home Gardens. Also, Read Across America, thank you so much for everyone that participated. Just fantastic program all across the United States. But here locally, I had the pleasure to go to Franklin and also to Adams, and had lots of fun reading, uh, to our children. That's just, that's what it's all, what it's all about, the kids. And it was really fun, and, uh, got to read to kindergarten kids, second graders, fourth graders, fifth graders. It was a, a lot of fun. So, uh, great job, everyone. Also, uh, we had a great STEM Expo at the, at, uh, E- ESTEM over there at Roosevelt Campus. So I want to give kudos to Kelly Howe and, uh, for keeping the STEM program super strong there at, at Roosevelt. Daniel, are you part of it?
I am not, but I can attest it's a really great program.
Yeah. So we want to thank all of our schools who participated in the expo. Wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you, Daniel. Also, I want to congratulate lots and lots of teams, but, uh, our CIF champions. We have champions for Centennial Boys Basketball. We have Boys Wrestling from Norco. Uh, Roosevelt has, uh, Brian Leon, who, who won the CIF Championship. We also have Javier Montes from Roosevelt and Nathan Rodriguez. All of them are CIF champions. And then, of course, we have our girls at Corona High School. This is, I think it's three-peat, or three years in a row, have, have won the CIF Southern Section Team Championship. So that was a, a lot of fun. And, um, tonight, we have, uh, excuse me, I also, we also have a, a Centennial High School has a champion as well, in Kendra Hernandez. So congratulations to Kendra. And then tonight, as we speak, we have, uh, Santiago Girls Basketball playing in, in the semifinals to get to state, which would be up in Sacramento this weekend. And we also have Centennial Boys Basketball also playing for the state. So good luck to both the, the Huskies and the Sharks this evening. And then lastly, I do want to say, uh, I want to give all of our, uh, high schools, uh, a, a lot of credit, especially those that are going through WASC right now. And, uh, thank you also to Dr. Boster, is she behind me here? Yeah, there she is, for help coordinating the WASC, uh, programs that we have right now. So, uh, the Western, for those of you who don't know, the Western Association of Schools and Colleges is WASC, and they accredit our schools. And, uh, right now, they're at Norco High School, but we have Roosevelt that's coming up this next weekend. And then we have Pollard the weekend after that, and then we have the, the Academy of Innovation, and also Centennial High School. So kudos to all of our high schools that are going through WASC right now. So that concludes my presentation, and, uh, send it back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Daniel, student report.
All right. So the Academy of Innovation will be having a virtual craft-making event and an in-person cookie decorating event. As Dr. Buonrostro mentioned, Centennial's Boys Basketball Team recently finished, finished as CIF Champions. They also had their Spring Assembly with performances from their theater program. And coming up, they will be having a freshman preview day and prom expo. Corona High School had their Winter Dance with a great turnout, and they are currently preparing for a Spring Fling, and will host a Spring Assembly on March seventeenth. Kennedy had a talent show, dance performance, Spirit Week, and Glow Fest. They are currently planning Prom Expo and have an assembly coming up. Norco High School had their eighth-grade parent night, AG Olympics, and Unity Dance. Coming up, they will be having a WWE-themed March Madness Assembly. Roosevelt had their Heroes Baseball Game, Blood Drive, STEM Expo, and AP slash CTE Fair. Their Link Crew is hosting a lip sync competition, and Dance Club is hosting a talent show. Santiago High School had their freshman showcase tonight, and will have a Parent Information Night tomorrow. Coming up, they're having their TED Talks event, Spring Rally, and Spring Fling. Additionally, all high schools have been working to plan the Spring Social Dance, which will be at Santiago this year. And this year's theme is Guys, Gals, and Gardens. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. We'll start on this side first. Chris, you're first.
All right. Well, I had a busy, um, cup, uh, last month, so I'll try to get through this quickly. Uh, I got a chance to stop by the District Spelling Bee, which was great, um, to see those smart kids, um, spelling all those big words. Um, I also had the opportunity to stop by the, um, renaming of the Norco Post Office, um, to the, uh, Kareem Nakui Post Office in honor of Kareem Nakui, who, who was killed in, in Afghanistan last year. Um, had a chance to visit the National Honor Roll Induction Ceremony at River Heights. Um, so I got to visit a, a few more very smart kids, um, over at River Heights, with a couple of the other board members here. Um, went to the Crystal Apple Awards, uh, and honored some of our high school teachers. Had a great time at the ESTEM Expo, uh, where over, I think they said, close to, or over two thousand community members stopped out to visit ESTEM and check out the amazing things they're doing there with the STEM technology and, um, really, really, uh, state-of-the-art technology that they have in that, in that building. Um, Dr. Boster was there to show us some of the, the cool and exciting medical stuff that they have in, in, in that section. Um, I was able to participate in the Read Across America also. I stopped by kindergarten classroom at Rondo and read a Dr. Seuss book. I also went to several schools this past month. I stopped by Reagan Elementary, Vander Mullen, uh, Rosa Parks, and Foothill. I also stopped by River Heights and Ramirez Intermediate, and then I stopped by Roosevelt and ESTEM. So it's very busy seeing what's going on in, in, in the district, and particularly in Eastville. I did want to mention, um, the Quanis Earth Day Cleanup is coming up soon, April twenty-second at nine AM, if you want to join us, uh, to help clean our earth, particularly in Eastville. Um, and then, if you would like to help a Eagle Scout get his project, uh, Nicholas Peterson is doing a banana bread fundraiser, and I bring this up particularly because he's raising money to, uh, build a PE rolling cart for Rosa Parks Elementary and a, uh, A-Frame music wall to help store their, um, some of their musical items for, for Rosa Parks. So if you want to see me after to order some banana bread, please do. Ten dollars apiece. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank all the reports tonight. It's, it's, these are all good reports, and that's why you're able to get questions from, from us, from board members, from the transportation, to the budget, to, uh, the EL, English Language Learners, as well as the recognition of, uh, the Corona Police Officer. That's really wonderful. Uh, I had a chance to, uh, you know, to, 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 uh, to deal with fifty to seventy kindergarteners. I thought a teacher invited me, or I volunteered to, to sing using a ukulele to a group of kindergarten. But then when I went there, the whole kindergarten teams came, and it's at Stallings. It's, it's all of them. And I got, I, I got nervous. I was just learning how to play ukulele, that I bought from Hawaii a few, a few weeks ago. But it's fun. And from that experience, I had a couple of invitations now, from other schools. I said, okay, I gotta, I gotta practice more. I, I, I also invited the president to come with me, but she's busy, but maybe next day. All right. Okay, uh, you know, I, I went to, uh, I got snowed in at, uh, in Portland, where you have, where we have the National Association for bilingual Education. It was, it's a good conference, even though it was snowing really hard. There were some four thousand people who showed up. It's amazing. And we did a presentation on instilling hope as a galvanizer for planning English language learners. Uh, we, we need to, to inject that notion of hope to all our kids and parents, uh, for these kids. Uh, I continue to, to enjoy working and, and talking to our, uh, Teacher Association. You know, that's good. They, they talk to our board members, and they visit the schools, and I really appreciate that. They, they're really connected to the masses of teachers, uh, in the district, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that they're doing that. Uh, as well as talking to, uh, Dr. Simon's team, I think we, we can accomplish a lot through dialogue, and, and really enjoy talking to, uh, our two specialists in reading, and I appreciate that. Uh, I think that's about it for now, and, uh, maybe it's gonna be a, a new, wonderful week, this week. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I was like, just all waiting to hear yours, Ms. Mary, and Phil's, I didn't realize I was skipping to me. Okay. All right. Good evening. Thank you for being here and staying around. The last month has been extremely busy, and I have to admit that I'm exhausted. Since our last board meeting, I've attended twenty-five events and meetings, just trying to keep up with Mary as a full-time job. Our district has fantastic programs to enrich our students, and my heart is happy to see kids engaged and thriving beyond the classroom. Some examples from the last month include the Spelling Bee, Junior ROTC, National Honor Society, PTA Reflections, Read Across America, and ESTEM Expo. I was honored to take part in School Smarts at Home Garden Academy, and so proud of the parents taking initiative to learn and grow alongside their kiddos. I'd like to commend Analia Oliver for her hard work and phenomenal translating skills. The Dream Lab is truly extraordinary and adds to the charm of Home Gardens Academy. Thank you to Manny Gonzalez, Lisa Moreno, and Venus Bugadin for the authentic homemade breakfast and HGA spiritware. I was incredibly impressed by the DLI students and teachers. It's one thing to teach seventh grade biology and quite another to teach it in Spanish. Muy bien, Catherine Alaman. I also had the privilege of visiting both elementary schools that I attended as a child. Sierra Vista is a sweet, small school that's doing big things. Thanks to Carrie Burns and Tammy Kim for the hospitality and tour. I keep thinking about the flexible seating arrangements in many of the classrooms, and hope the students know how fortunate they are to have progressive, caring teachers and administrators. and hope the students know how fortunate they are to have progressive, caring teachers and administrators that value the need many kids have to move and squirm. I love visiting school sites and, and seeing equity in action. The students genuinely seemed content and happy. I was invited by Rush Schreiber and Suzanne Adame to Read Across America Day at Norco Elementary. This was extra special to me for three reasons. Evan Azavito in second grade, Reagan Azavito in Kinder, and Brixton Bodie in Kinder. They're my nieces and nephew. My Auntie Kathy Cyberling is also a teacher at Norco L. I had an absolute blast meeting students and sharing about my love for reading. Their excitement and energy was amazing, and their comments were entertaining. The last thing I want to mention is how much I enjoyed the Clifton Strengths Training with Alexis Burrell last month. We discovered our individual strengths and then compared notes as a board. It was fascinating to see what we bring to the table as a team. It was no surprise to me that my top strength, their, top strength theme is learning. I love to learn, and the knowledge and insights gained undoubtedly build my confidence. My key takeaway from Alexis is to focus on further developing our strengths, not dwelling on weaknesses, as I admittedly tend to do. I really appreciate the value our district places on professional development. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, I learned long ago, you can't keep up with Mary, so. But you're doing a great job, both of you guys try and so. Quick update, Santiago Girls Basketball are the CIF Regional Southern California Champions. They won, so. And unfortunately, Centennial Boys are down kind of big in the fourth quarter. I don't know a score, but they're down. So anyway, congratulations. They are, were uh, CIF Open Division Champions, so. Um, and it's not over, so. Okay, so the, the Governance Workshop that a couple people mentioned, I just again wanted to, to thank my fellow board members for that. I, I just thought it was a great um, night of discussion. Dr. Burrell had a great presentation, and um, again, I just really appreciate the, uh, the openness and the candidness and the discussions uh, that we all had um, so that we can be a better team for our students um, and our district and our community. So thank you guys all for that. That was nice. Um, with, along with Chris, I got to visit Foothill, um, which was an incredible time with uh, Dr. B and Dr. Goines, um, and saw some great things. And remind me who, where did we get the books from? Charlotte, maybe? Yes. We got to distribute classroom books because they're going around the district, and so they just got them, so Chris and I and Sam got to hand them out to two classes. Um, and the kids just lit up, and the teachers lit up. So uh, thank you for uh, getting us all those books for, for our young readers. And it, it was great to see what's going on at Foothill, and uh, Mr. Schwelt, the transition into principal. Um, he's done a great job, so it was, was great to be there. Um, being involved with the WASC process, um, it seems like they're all coming back now. Um, and so got to uh, be involved in the Santiago process, and I know that there's some more coming up. Um, the Crystal Awards um, at the LDS Church in Corona was wonderful to um, uh, celebrate our teachers and educators um, and just hear the wonderful stories that the students had for, for their, uh, their teachers. Um, some community functions, uh, Ladders and Linguini, uh, most of us went to that, and it was great to, to just be involved with the community and support the Corona Library, and uh, that was a nice thing. And uh, Corona Life Services was an event Chris and I were able to go to, hear uh, Sheriff Bianco speak, and he wanted me to say thank you to our uh, SROs, and he thinks you guys are awesome, and he appreciates you just like we do. So uh, that was great. And it was again, great to, to see the uh, EL uh, progress that we, uh, that we saw tonight. Um, that was just so incredible, and, and just a shout out to all our, our schools and our uh, district for the great job that they're doing with that. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't run out of time. I went everywhere they went. And um, it's great. The, the principals love seeing us. The kids love seeing us, you know, so we're doing a good job. I, I know we're doing a good job. Stacy and I also went to the Unity Luncheon where we honored um, community members and some of our high school students. Delac. Carlos, you forgot to say that we have eight hundred reclassifications. That is like amazing. I was crying there, giving out awards, going, oh man, this is, and this is unbelievable. And um, our goal for June is at least nine hundred? Yeah? A hundred more? Um, yeah. Uh, I've been talking to Corona High, it's like, you guys, you have to do it. Come on, we gotta get to nine hundred. Um, it, it's great. The, the faces on these kids when you say that they're reclassified, and the parents. It's, you know, the kids are so happy, for one, to be out of that class that they're in, and another one, you know, some kids, I know when my kids started Kinder, I didn't understand what that all meant, so I put my kids, they speak Spanish at home, and they put them in, and then I had to go fight because it's like, but they don't speak Spanish, really. I mean, just, they understand. So it's kind of a little confusing, but to have eight hundred reclassifications, and um, I was telling Dr. Gomez, our county superintendent, and he's like, wow, that's more than anybody else. I go, shh, don't tell anybody because we don't want them to beat us, right? So anyways, we have to win. Um, Corona High and JRTC was amazing too, to see those kids and, you know, it, it's, it's just an amazing program, and I know several of our high schools have that. I've been having breakfast with CNTA and CSEA. Maybe we should have some meetings where we don't eat. Also, PTA Council Reflections was great to see our students. One thing that I had never seen was a student, he did the Punjabi dance. Punjab? Yeah. He was gr- what was it?
Bollywood?
Bollywood. Um, he was amazing at, we were standing up there going, whoa, man, we're tired, and he's still going up there on the stage. He was, he was great. Um, our kids have talent. Um, I was able to go to Vicentia and Adams to Read Across America, and Meg went with me to Adams, so we got to read to little kids. The kindergarteners are the funniest, because they kept stopping me every page. What did the little pig do? Wait, wait, let me turn the page, you know. It, it's amazing. PTA Council, PTA Council, um, School Smart, thank you Anna for that. Um, that, it's a great class, and we are empowering our parents. We're teaching them. Now they know what a school board member, right ladies? What a school board member is? Before, they didn't know what that was. Okay, I'm almost done. And today's State of the Education Report with um, Dr. Gomez. We heard um, a lot of things that he has going in our district and why. And one last thing. Congratulations to Ayesha Randawa. She has the highest scoring, she was the highest-scoring student in the county um, in academic decathlon. And if you remember, Ayesha was our Spelling Bee four times to Nationals. And now her sister went, I think, three times to National, and now it's the little brother. So they're gonna be here for a while. So, thank you very much. Alrighty. CNTA, Meg.
Good evening, Madam President, Board, and Cabinet. Uh, tonight, we all um, got to see the second, uh, Ms. Elwood and Ms. Guatemala present the Second Interim Budget Report. Uh, Ms. Guat- Guatemala mentioned that there is good news to celebrate, and I could not agree more, but I wanted to take a minute to explain just how good it is to all of you. So if you um, got the agenda online, or you could look at your packet, on page twenty, item Z, there was an attachment. The attachment was for the um, second, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three Second Interim Financial Report Narrative. And it says, "The remaining fund balance above the reserve requirement is projected at a hundred and ninety point two million dollars." That means that, right now, we currently have two hundred and nine point three million dollars in reserve, in our savings. Um, if you, uh, they even presented it tonight on the um, Second Interim Budget Report. It was on page ten. It's on the third column, down at the bottom. The resolving, revolving cash committed, other assignments, and the two percent reserve for economic uncertainties. But they had it um, parceled out into different categories. But if you add all of those four categories up, it's two hundred and nine million dollars in reserve. I've shared with you on many board meetings and in our monthly chats that we're having these one-on-one conversations with our members. And there's three things coming to the surface: class size, deteriorating facilities, and our sped teachers not having all the supports that they need. So my question is why? Why do we have the highest class sizes in the inland empire if we have two hundred and nine million dollars in reserve? Why do we have schools like Citrus Hills? I'm sure they're going to be emailing you deteriorating around themselves with leaking roofs, HVAC systems that don't work, restrooms that don't work, when we have two hundred and nine million dollars in reserve? Why are there unmet needs in our sped population when we have, I'll say it again, two hundred and nine million dollars in reserve? Mary, why is transportation telling you that they need to look for available resources to send the thirty-something kids from Home Gardens to Corona High if they have two hundred and nine million dollars in reserve? My last question is this. They'll tell you that the money has been committed, but has it been committed to our students? Remember that anything that you have committed, you can re-commit to our students and our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. CSEA, Lorena?
Good evening, Madam President, School Board, Dr. Buendesto, and Cabinet. CSEA would like to share our concerns, hoping to see some change. I'm gonna share uh, three different issues. First issue is, for the past thirty years, our classified members, uh, specialty paraeducators have been running on this pink time card that has been systematically used by the district to circumvent members' an opportunity to work full-time versus part-time. For example, a permanent three-hour part-time employee may be working full-time for the entire school year by completing a pink time card. Students need paraeducators' support throughout the school day. Please offer the positions for the number of hours needed. Also, the pink time card creates substantial office work for different departments. Issue number two, staffing shortages within our district is widespread. Retaining employees for all classifications is very challenging. We need to be more competitive, better paid for good employees to stay. It's been uh, forty years that Support Services has had the same number of specialty trades employees. For example, the district painter's staffing remains at six employees. Since forty years, the district continued to grow rapidly with new school sites, hence the workload increased too. More staffing is needed in all departments to continue with the level of service the district is requiring. Our members have been doing an outstanding job, trying to keep up with demand, but it's very overwhelming. Number, issue number three, the job responsibility of our custodians at our school sites is to maintain the school site facilities, assist teachers and students. CSEA strongly believes in early education, but since legislation has passed the transitional kindergarten program, our custodians' work has increased at the elementary level. The daily cleaning due to kids getting sick means more cleanup time. It's very challenging to keep up with very messy cleanup and maintain the yard work. Every elementary school should have a groundskeeper at each site to maintain the grounds work. Also, secondary school sites have sporting events, sometimes during a school day or evening, sometimes when students are not in school. Those events may or may not be a school program. We are not privy to see if they have filled out a facility usage form or not. Sometimes these athletic programs are outside vendors that are hosted by, by our school sites. For example, tournaments that are travel ball are not a school program. Our custodians are assigned to a specific area to clean, but when the district has a sporting event, they have our custodians clean up after the athletic events, which are not part of their daily work schedule. They are directed to skip their cleaning that, of their assigned work schedule, which are mostly student classrooms. Therefore, they are doing extra duties and still expected to maintain a high standard of cleaning in their work area. CSEA appreciates the support of our school board. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to public comment. At this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a public session of the board and not a meeting of the public. Although the board will not respond to speakers directly, either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact speakers or follow up with written communication. If multiple speakers address the same subject, I may request that subsequent speakers only add new information. The time limit for a given topic is twenty minutes regardless of the number of speakers. If a speaker wishes to be heard on more than three topics, a speaker will be allowed up, up to a total of ten minutes to address all desired items. Persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of these complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at a meeting. Please refrain from applauding after each speaker. Public comment is now open. Whitney Coco.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm glad somebody else brought up facilities maintenance um, at this meeting, because this is something that I am here to discuss. Um, the other day, I picked up my eight-year-old son from school, and in the car, he said, "Mom, guess what?" I'm thinking, "You passed your times test. You got an O-plus on your spelling. Not even close." "What, buddy? Tell me." "They put maxi pad machines in the boys' bathroom." "Excuse me?" "Yeah, Mom. Maxi pads." "CND, CNUSD, seriously? Why?" "When you can't even put functioning soap dispensers in the bathrooms at Foothill, the kids can't even wash their hands properly, someone just mentioned that roofs are leaking on other campuses, yet, tell me, most of you have a PhD in education, and we teach science in this district, correct? Tell me where the science says that boys have a menstrual cycle. By a show of hands in this room, I want to see any of the men in this room raise their hand and tell me that is their time of the month." "What are you teaching these kids? What common core garbage education promotes this thought process? I know you guys use the DI model, the Diversity Inclusion Equity uh, model, the DI model, but how does this tie into that? My kid can't even wash his hands properly because the soap dispensers don't even work in the school bathrooms. Don't worry though, the tampon dispenser is brand-new and functions properly. Stop wasting tax dollars on useless, useless poison for the kids. You are not helping them. Those funds should be used to improve facilities, or most importantly, educational resources. You even have kids in these schools that can't even read in the middle grades. This is so sad, but yet you will see dollar signs from the state and implement whatever they say. What in the woke? Fix the problems at hand, don't create new ones. Just when I think you can't waste any more money or resources, I was so wrong. I'm extremely disappointed as a parent and as a human in general. Shoving this garbage down the kids' throats is shameful. I hope that you enjoy spending money on facilities maintenance because you will have plumbing problems soon enough." Also, as a parent, I would like to be notified when the um, males in the populations at the school will be instructed how to insert the tampon in their penis. So Dr. B, next time you need a maxi pad for your menstrual cycle, please visit your, your local CNUSD elementary school boys' bathroom. Thank you, and please fix the problems on the campus to help the kids succeed.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessie Kang.
Good evening. You guys have spoken a lot about my school tonight, so I am just here to ask about the school busking from Home Gardens to Corona High. I am a parent of two kids in the DLI program, but my kids are still really young. But the reason I am here is because when my kids were there, we committed, as a parent, to finish the program. Just because I'm super-involved in the school, a lot of the parents who don't speak English have come to me and they said, "Hey, how do we do this? Like, my kids are not going to finish the program. Half of the kids in DLI are English learners, and they're like, they can't go to Corona High. And we've invested all this time in getting them in the DLI program. We've did all the requirements. What can we do to get them to Corona High?" And so I'm like, well, let me figure it out. And so I joined PTA. I'm now an ELAC member too, and so, and here I am today. And I've asked both of you, Ms. Ibarra and Ms. Nicola, I'm like, hey, what can I do to help out these parents who don't have the language, who don't have the words that can, you know, that can sort of ask for what they need for their students? And I've spoken to a lot of the kids in middle school. And I've asked them, "Where are you going to school?" Even if they're in the dual, even if they're, you know, even if they're just general students, and they say, "We're going to Santiago" because that's the only buses that are offered in our area. So if there's something you guys can look in, I know I've heard from transportation that you're going to look at the LCAP funding. Please, I encourage it, and I urge you, come visit our school. You'll see that a lot of the kids there, they want, they want options. They want different options, not just the dual kids. So I also brought a lot of parents, and one of them is going to speak next in Spanish, so you know that, you know, it really is a need that we need to, we need to look into. Thank you.
Thank you. Candida Baltasar.
Buenas noches. Disculpen el atrevimiento, no sé inglés, pero con una sola persona que me escuche lo que voy a decir, sé qué le puede decir a los demás. Estoy aquí, soy una madre de una alumna de doble inmersión, está en Corona. Y cuando fue la primera reunión, todavía la recuerdo, fue en este edificio más para allá. Y me acuerdo que nos dijeron que nos teníamos que, como padres, nos teníamos que comprometer al programa. Y dije, sí, voy a hacer eso. Voy a comprometerme por mi hija porque quiero que ella, pues sea, sea alguien, ¿verdad? Que ella pueda ser una persona bilingüe porque, pues yo hablo español, ¿verdad? Y no, no, y yo quiero que ellos sean algo más que yo. Pero la mera verdad, en estos, en estos años, me he sentido olvidada por el distrito porque siento que no nos han apoyado. Cuando yo quise buscar ayuda, me dijeron, "Ve, habla con, con el distrito." Y pues, la mera verdad, cuando me dijeron que iba a venir hoy, no quise perder esta oportunidad. Yo sé que no todos me están entendiendo, pero sí quiero decirles que es muy importante que los niños tengan un VAS. Los niños cuando salen del mirósculo tienen que 14, 15 años. No los podemos mandar en el VAS regular. Yo no sé quién se ha subido al VAS del uno, pero ahí sube mucha gente drogadicta. Y son niños, por lo menos yo, son hijas las que tengo. Y pues, para subirlas a un VAS así donde va cualquier tipo de gente, la mera verdad, a mí no se me hace confiable. Y entonces, a estos años que ya ha venido a Corona, ha sido muy difícil para mí. Y tengo otros niños que van a salir de la escuela también, y quisiera que tomaran en cuenta eso. Que, por favor, de verdad, les pedimos un VAS para Home Gardens. Es muy importante, y yo sé que, como padres, nos comprometemos. Yo sé que al principio del año habían como dos grupos de 30 niños cada clase porque ahí me tocaba ir a ayudar a los maestros. Y ahorita le pregunté a la niña que está atrás, que ella también es de Corona, le dije, "Mija, ¿cuántos niños están por graduarse de doble inmersión?" Me dijo seis. Entonces, yo creo que por lo menos de, del mirósculo han de haber salido unos, que 40, 45, por algunos que se movieron, lo que sea. Pero digo, seis, es, son muy poquitos. A todos los niños que entran, y porque también, yo no sé, pues ustedes saben los números mejor que yo, pero hay niños que se quedan fuera de doble inmersión y quieren entrar. Entonces, digo, si nosotros seguimos apoyando nuestros niños, nuestra comunidad, esta comunidad de ahí es una comunidad que son puros hispanos. Entonces, de verdad, les pido de corazón que tomen en cuenta lo del VAS para Home Gardens. Yo sé que no nada más está eso, ¿verdad? Hay muchas necesidades, pero en esta noche les voy a pedir eso. Muchas gracias los que me entendieron y los que no, disculpen.
Gracias.
Mrs. Ibarra.
Yes.
Do you want me to translate?
Yes.
Summarize quickly what she said. So, Mrs. Baltasar mentioned that she has a daughter in the dual-language program, and they, the district asked her, the parents, to commit to the program. And so what she wants to say is that she's felt a little bit left, left out, and that it's very important that the students remain in the program. And her daughter has, it's been challenging getting her to Corona High School. And so she's asking for a VAS. And then she also mentions that, that there's six graduates from what she knows, I think, the current class, and she knows that there would probably be more graduates if there was a VAS, basically. And then, yeah, so basically, and that was her main message, but she appreciates, she wanted to be here this evening and speak, and hopefully, we understood what she said. And I think it's, no one heard her message, so. Gracias, señor Baltasar.
Gracias. Okay, are there any questions, comments, or highlights on any other consent items?
I need to pull one. 17A on page 22.
Two?
Yes.
Any other polls? Okay. So we will, Daniel? Okay. Then we will go to 17A.
I check. Vote, vote first.
Sorry, we will vote on everything else.
So move.
I need a second. All in favor? Daniel? Almost. Okay, now we will go to 17A. I'm sorry, 12C. It is recommended that the Board of Education consider voting for no more than six candidates to serve as representatives to the 2023 CSBA Delegate Assembly. So we can vote for six or none. What is your pleasure?
Is there anyone from our board who's interested? Let me ask my question.
Mary and I serve.
Serve.
Oh, you already serve, okay.
So I just, I, I just say we skip it.
Want to vote for anybody?
I want to vote for Robert Garcia. How many, Robert? Our neighbor from Aurora.
Else?
And Cleveland Johnson.
Oh, yep. We can have one more if somebody else wanted to join us on the, as a CSB. Is that we're?
More? You could have one more. You can nominate one more from CNUSD Board.
Would that be the write-in on here? Or that just is because we have enough of us that we get three? I see.
We're interested.
Is that an alternate?
Yeah.
Reject.
We're big.
So I contacted CSBA for clarification on the, if you look at your ballot that you have in front of you, you will find a box that says there's insufficient nominations were received. Therefore, any district in Subregion 18A, which we are part of, can nominate a candidate for that position. We already have our two appointed delegates, which is Mrs. Ibarra and Mrs. Nicola. But because we are part of Subregion 18A, we could have a third CSBA delegate, which would be an elected position.
Would they have to? Would our person, though, also have?
We would have to, our board would have to elect our person, and then if someone else in Subregion 18A elects the same person from our board, we could possibly have a third CSBA delegate. But yes, I understand there was an email circulated to board members with a recommendation for a different board member as a write-in candidate. You may have received that email from?
Yeah, we did. But if we nominate someone from here, this person will not be an alternate, it will be a voting member.
That is correct. It would be a CSBA delegate member.
And if we put their name on this ballot and we vote them in, is this going, there's going to be another ballot to bring this name?
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, the, a CSBA will send out the full list of appointed and elected CSBA delegates the end of March, beginning of April.
So what if every board came over the person? Like, how would, who's going to decide? Like, if every board said, oh, well, we want to add a person as this?
In this case, and allow me if I am assuming correct, but you would have to have expressed an interest between boards in Subregion 18A. Hey, I'm interested in the write-in.
Uh, like the person that emailed?
Yeah. But we could nominate someone today if we wanted to.
I see.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Chris Rahag.
Yep, Seb?
Yeah.
Okay, there's some travel. We're going to have to go to Sacramento, so just, you have to take your day off of work.
I'm still, pardon my slowness. Remember, I'm exhausted, I announced in my report report. So, so say we nominate Chris, he's on here. Well, obviously, the person that emailed us wants to also be on here because they were urging us to vote for them. So what, I guess, like, that's my question is, so say, how do we bounce Chris in and the other guy out from this spot? The sixth person.
So a ballot will come back?
Yes, a runoff. I guess that's the word I'm looking for.
I don't think there's a runoff. It's going to be based on the write-in, you know, popularity vote. So if?
Yeah, well, nobody's going to know to vote for him.
I mean, we're voting for him, but did he express to anyone that he's interested? Other districts won't be nominating?
I, for me, Madam President, for me, I think we should, you know, nominate a colleague, and then let them figure it out.
There's a runoff or not? Okay, so who will second Chris? Okay, all in favor? Are we, I'm voting. Daniel?
Wait, so, I'm sorry, I need clarification. So did we, did we say Robert? Did, I know that somebody wanted Robert.
Cleveland, Cleveland Johnson from Moreno Valley, unless you have other?
So we're going to have three. We're going to have Chris, we're going to have Robert, and Cleveland? Is that my understanding?
You can vote for the five and Mr. Rahaga.
Okay, so I will put Madonna Gurrell also.
Okay, it's six, good, good.
No, it's us. All right, so you want to vote for the whole list? Okay.
Let's Rahaga.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're voting for the whole list plus Chris.
A motion?
Okay, so we need a motion again?
I move that we vote these five listed in the ballot, including Chris Rahaga.
That is correct.
And then I second.
Second, Bill? Daniel? Okay, do you want us to vote on this? Okay. Right. This is your only runoff? Whatever happens next.
Let them figure it out. Nah, he'll be good, he'll be good.
Now, we will go to 17A. All right.
Excuse me, I just pulled this because I have to abstain due to a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
All right, so do you want a motion?
I make a motion to approve 17A.
I'll second.
Okay. Let's vote.
Yes, from me.
Daniel?
All right.
You're on a roll.
Daniel?
I got the paper right here. Call on Daniel. Okay. Oops. Okay, so prior to a journey, we'll announce that the board will meet at the, as the Land Acquisition Corporation, following the regular board meeting. Okay, so I will call for a motion and a second for the regular board meeting to adjourn.
Second.
Daniel?
Yes, from me.
Second?
Someone, or who?
Jose?
Okay, so I'll second.
Bill, second. All in favor? Vote. Okay. All right, now I will call to order the meeting of the Board of Directors of Corona-Norca Unified School District Land Acquisition Corporation, a California-based nonprofit public benefit corporation, March 7, 2023. So, Mr. Zigafus' term as chairman ended in December of 2022. We need a motion, second, and a vote to appoint an LAC chairman. This is for a three-year term effective March 8, 2023, to December 2025. Who wants to be?
Nominate Rahaga. Or Stacy. Whoever, whoever is available.
So I'll second, Mr. Rahaga.
Okay. All right, we're going to do a hand vote. Chris? Yes, because I want it.
You're on the roll, Chris.
All right.
Okay.
But now he presides over the meeting, right? He takes over.
Oh, you take over.
You're on B.
Okay, number, letter B.
All right, we're moving on to B. Dr. Lawless's term as treasurer ended in December of 2022. We need a motion, second, and a vote to appoint a LAC treasurer. This is for a three-year term effective March 8, 2023, through December 2025.
I nominate Stacy Nicola.
I second.
All right, we have a nomination.
Vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Daniel? All right. Can I get a motion and a second? And a vote to adopt the minutes of the LAC meeting held on November 9, 2021? Myself and Mrs. Nicola will abstain from voting.
So move.
A second.
Vote.
Daniel?
Guys, don't, you guys don't. Yeah, you don't.
No, you don't want?
Oh, yeah, I'm staying. Yeah. All right. And after all of that business, can we now, can I get a motion and a second to adjourn, adjourn this meeting?
So move.
Second.
Meeting the church.